Good morning, everyone. I'm calling to order the March 1st Board of Supervisors meeting. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Gruhova.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Present.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Bronson.
Yes.
Let the record show all members are present. This meeting is being conducted virtually.
And I understand that we, there was some trouble maybe with streaming, but that's where should be able to stream on YouTube and everything at this point?
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay, I'm before the Pledge of Allegiance and the Land Acknowledgement Statement. I want to take a moment of personal privilege to publicly state that I stand with the free and democratic people of Ukraine, who for the past week have been fighting for their freedom, their democracy, their nation against the aggression of Russia. And I ask that everyone in Pima County keep the people of Ukraine in their thoughts during these days and that they offer comfort and support to the thousands of Ukrainian immigrants and people of Ukrainian heritage living in Pima County, who may have family and friends fighting for their lives in their former countries. You know, at every board meeting, we all stand and pledge our dedication to liberty and justice in America. So today, as we do the Pledge of Allegiance, let's also stand for the people of Ukraine and do all that we can so that freedom and justice survives in their beautiful country. And I note that Switzerland, who always remains neutral, has taken a stand against Russia. So again, that's my, you know, that's my moment of personal privilege. But I'm hopeful that, as the city of Tucson has already done, that we can light up the county buildings, or at least one of them, with the colors of the Ukrainian flag. And Ms. Lesher, do you think that's possible?
Chair Bronson, yes, we hope that that will be active tonight.
Thank you. And with that, let's rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and then the Land Acknowledgement Statement to be given by Supervisor Rick Scott. Please rise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allegiance, five states of America. And to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can't hear you.
You're, we're having real difficulty hearing.
Chair Bronson, I actually asked our Pima County Recorder, Gabriela Casadas Kelly, to read the land acknowledgement.
Well, I'm sorry Supervisor Scott is going to be doing it. Thank you. I didn't realize you'd have done that.
I don't mind deferring to Recorder Casadas Kelly.
Okay, fine. And again Supervisor Scott, we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay, I will try and adjust the volume.
I apologize. Who is going to read?
Gabriela Casadas Kelly, our Pima County Recorder.
There she is.
Good day, everybody. I'm Anya Neptugy, Gabriela Casadas Kelly. This is Mo'ochuk Kandut. I'm Yo'ho Chupk Inap, Pima County Recorder's office. So good morning, everyone. My name is Gabriela Casadas Kelly. I'm from the communities of Bismol and Kuk, which are in District 3, right here in beautiful Pima County. And I'm the Pima County Recorder. Today, I am so proud and privileged to be able to read this statement. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Bonnawatam Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasquayaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. And I'd also like to take a moment to thank the supervisors for approving this message. It has meant a great deal to the community members of both the communities that are acknowledged in this statement as well as the Native nations that are represented here, both the 22 Arizona tribal members as well as the over 574 federally recognized nations and Indigenous peoples that do not have that recognition. And so it makes a great deal of difference. It is a moment to feel seen, listened to, included, and have opportunities for so much outreach and connection to learn more about one another and have people feel included. So as the first Native American elected to a countywide office, again, I want to make sure that we're expressing our appreciation for that and know that this is only an opportunity to build and strengthen our community as a whole. Bye, Hoki.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And now let's move on to item four on the agenda, Pause for Pause. Everybody?
Hi, everybody. My name's Monica Dangler. I'm the director here at Pima Animal Care Center. And today at Pause for Pause, I wanted to introduce you to my office mate, Jake. That's right, I said office mate. We are super full. We're back in code red. So that means we have dogs like Jake in non-public kennels. So in offices and then isolation units and things like that. Jake is a great dog. He's about five years old. He's a fun guy. He likes to play fetch. He nibbles on his food throughout the day. He likes to just hang out with you and be with you all day long. He gets sad when you walk away. But otherwise, he's a good boy. He's house-trained. He hasn't had any accidents in my office at all. He doesn't tear things up. So if you'd like to adopt Jake or any of our dogs, come on down. All of our adoption fees are currently waived as well as most reclaimed fees. But we've got Jake and we've got about 400 other dogs, just like Jake, looking for a home. So I hope to see you guys soon. Talk to you later. Bye.
Thank you, Monica. All right, we now move on to, and at 9:15, we are going to move to Sheriff Manos and his presentation regarding adult detention.
Here's what I found.
I'm sorry, my watch is talking to me. I have no idea why. We will do that at a time certain at 9:15. But now we have a presentation, proclamation to Perry Spencer, procurement director, proclaiming the month of March 2022 to be procurement month and proclaiming the day of Wednesday, March 9, to be professional buyer's day. And I will read that proclamation. Here we go. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods, services, procurement professionals add value to their organizations by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within their organization. And whereas the public procurement professionals in Pima County and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influences on economic conditions in the United States and with cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas the public procurement professionals, and you know, it's really fun to say public procurement professionals, all in one sentence, in Pima County are committed to providing high caliber strategic logistic and operational support for all the departments within Pima County. And whereas the public procurement professionals in Pima County recognize, support, and practice the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand awareness of the procurement professional's role to government officials, the general public, and business and corporate leaders. Now, therefore, be it result that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 to be procurement month and the day of Wednesday, March 9, 2022, to be professional buyer's day in our community and urges all residents to recognize the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within the business and within business and government. Passed and adopted this first day of March 2022. And it's staff Tuesday as I, you know, we're headed into Lent tomorrow. So I don't know, is Perry available or anybody from procurement? Would they like to speak?
Madam Chair, before Ms. Spencer speaks, can we get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll move it.
A second.
Motion and a second. If there are no objections, motion carries. And if Perry is available, whoever from procurement. That's interesting. Are we having technical difficulties?
Our connection isn't solid, unfortunately. The only way to fix it is to disconnect and reconnect.
Chair Bronson, if I may, simply accept on behalf of a very proud procurement department and make sure that I share with them the thanks and the gratitude of the board and the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're basically at nine, well, it's 9:13, but we're at 9:15. Is Sheriff Manos available?
Sheriff Manos is on the line. Nico, can you unmute him?
And this is agenda item number 12 on our regular agenda. And we're going to, we have about 15 minutes for this. And Sheriff Manos, if you'd like to make the presentation or you wanted to give us an update, I believe, on fentanyl overdoses and COVID mitigation at the jail. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, thank you for moving your agenda around and getting me up front. I apologize, we have so much going on this morning. But I'll be as brief as I can. We are sending it, we haven't already, currently, you'll get a letter from the, all of you, Madam Chair and the rest of the board members, Ms. Lesher, that will outline for you, I think, everything that we are working on.
No.
I need somebody to help me here.
Or Nico. He controls it from downtown.
They asked me if I'm on. Are you not hearing me, Sharon?
I hear you perfectly. Okay, there we go.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure if somebody, okay. Well, first of all, Madam Chair and board members, thank you so much for letting me go up in front of all of us. It is a busy morning for me and I appreciate your deference to that. I'll be brief. We are sending you a letter, each one of you, Ms. Lesher as well, that really details all the things we've done at the Pima County Building Detention Center in regards to all of these issues, particularly the fentanyl issues as well. But let me first start by thanking you for your support through that pretty tough time with our COVID vaccine mandate at the jail. Our numbers are, I believe, above 85% vaccination as of yesterday afternoon for the county, for the department. The jail, of course, is 100%. But some of the COVID numbers, like in the county, have diminished greatly. And I would, I hope to see those even drop further. As of yesterday, we had a total of 15 inmates in the entire facility that were positive. That's a percentage of 0.84%, less than 1%. We also, a number that gets smaller, that is a critical area for us because it really duplicates the work effort and adds stress to a, as you are well aware, a very short-stamped corrections facility. And so that helps us tremendously in reducing the amount of work that can be done. Excuse me. So you know, as, I think we're 104 corrections officers down as of today. But the work they do, and this will get to the fentanyl and the death issues of those at the jail that we see, the work that those young men and women do every day goes by unnoticed because we just do our job. The young men and women every day show up and perform and they're not looking for accolades. They just want to do their job. But I want to share with you a story yesterday that just came up yesterday. A young corrections officer is making his rounds and he finds an inmate in one of our pods hanging. He quickly jumps to aid this individual, cuts him down, and takes this individual, they transport him. He is now still alive and with us. That inmate, that correction officer made that round in 15 minutes. Typically, those rounds are 20 minutes or longer. Because of his dedication to say, hey, I'm going to do this job and I'm going to make those rounds as often as I can, that young inmate is with us today. Five more minutes would have still been within our policies if that inmate wouldn't have been here today, had it not been for the dedication, that young officer, to make his round to make sure that those people are safe. You know, let me start with this. I think you all know, but I'm going to say it anyway. The sheriff's department, this sheriff, the department, those who work at that facility have absolutely zero, and rightfully so, have nothing to do with the medical care of those inmates. We just don't. And we turn that over to the health department, appropriately so. Dr. Garcia and Dr. Cullen's team, they contract out with a vendor, a NapCare, who does, from what I've seen, a tremendous job. I think you've heard about the work efforts they put forward to be able to get methadone back into the facility. And they themselves want to be in charge of the dispersment of that drug. When we talk about detox, methadone, another opioid, it is so delicate in how we administer that. I don't know all the particulars. I just know this past summer, we saw some issues that concerned us in the dispensing of that methadone. And that was with the past healthcare providers and the past mat team. Those issues, we reported to Mr. Huckleberry and they got resolved rather quickly. That healthcare provider is no longer there. The mat is no longer there. We have met with Dr. Alvarez, spoke with him, worked with Dr. Paul Barrera. We continue to work every day with our health partners and strive to assist them with whatever we can do. But again, the reality of the situation is simply this. The sheriff's department, those young men and women over there, do all they can to keep people safe. But we have nothing to do when it comes to the medical care of those individuals. And that's, again, I can't stress it. You don't want the sheriff giving you medical advice. Having said all of that, I will leave it for you for questions. I was asked to attend this, that you might have some questions and I'll open it up for there. But again, I thank you so much for your assistance. We struggle with our staffing numbers and we'll be coming to you with those numbers or request to increase those numbers here in the days ahead. But I really do appreciate all you do for us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think Sheriff Manos, we appreciate all you do for us as well. Are there any questions from board members?
Yeah, Chair Bronson.
Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. And Sheriff, thanks so much for agreeing to speak to us today. Just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, the fentanyl overdoses and COVID situation and mitigation, which you've touched on briefly. I think going to the, like, the availability of Narcan. I know that the board believe, actually, I'm not going to remember the date, but we did dedicate a quarter of a million dollars to purchase naloxone or Narcan doses, the rescue drug for narcotic or opiate overdose, and to make that available to you and your department and to all of your officers. Just curious how that's going in terms of making sure that your officers, you have enough.
Yeah, well, I'll let staff work with, we've worked with Dr. Garcia. There was a time when we were stressed and we went down on it and we needed more. Actually, NapCare is getting Narcan. We were, again, I'm not a medical professional. The documents you'll have will give you those numbers. But I think NapCare has doubled the strength of that dose of Narcan in obtaining that medication. And we now, if you were an inmate in a pod, say, on the fourth floor and you went down and we needed Narcan, past years, we contacted the medical provider and they would come running down the hallways, up the elevators, and get to you as quickly as they can. But that made no sense. That stuff is, we need it right now. So we have put that Narcan into every pod. Every CO in that facility has immediate access to Narcan. And that is spilled out in the letter as well. But yes, we have worked closely again with Dr. Garcia and his team and Dr. Alvarez from NapCare to strengthen the dose, but to get more of it and get it more accessible to those who need to have it right there, in there.
Great. And in terms of supply, you have adequate supply at this point?
But yes, I know when we, some of the things with COVID, we were probably one of the only facilities in the state at the time that was administering vaccines to our inmates. And we did, I know we ran low on that. Dr. Garcia's team got us as quickly as they could, got us up to the numbers we need. And so that's in a good position. I've never heard we've had a problem with Narcan right now, so, but I'll get back to you, Dr. Heinz, if I see that's an issue.
Perfect, thank you. And with regard to COVID, obviously, the numbers in the community have been coming down, thank God. We're seeing that in hospitals as well. I'm sure that's being reflected with regard to the jail population, but what ongoing mitigation efforts are you still?
Well, we're still, we're still, and that's why I'm hoping to talk with Dr. Garcia more. We are still at the original CDC guidelines, 14-day isolation periods, everybody's matched up, you know, it creates double work. When you're dealing with that environment, we have to deal with classification and placement of individuals and you then have to do isolation, it doubles that amount of work, the resources are doubled as well in terms of needs. So if we could reduce some of those timelines, it will help that staff over there tremendously. So we'll see. But I am, I'm very positive about the numbers, like I say, we've watched them drop day by day, just as you have in the, across this community, the same is going on with the jail.
Great. And just the last thing, I think one of the reasons that I certainly wanted to speak with you a little bit with regard to the, just having inmates die, you know, in our custody, 10 to 12, I believe, a year, 2021, 2020, I believe also 2019. When these kinds of deaths occur, you know, especially if it looks like this, there could be, you know, some illicit substances like fentanyl involved, what is your process? How does that kind of investigation go forward and how do you sort of address that?
You know, Dr. Heinz, first of all, let me say this. I don't really care about the numbers if we have 10 deaths or one deaths, that's too many. We don't want any deaths in our facility. And I can easily point to COVID has brought on a number of deaths there. Fentanyl, the use of fentanyl across this country, much less just in the state, I think Dr. Garcia tracked it up level last, a few weeks ago, where it's the no-one killer of our kids. It is a horrific drug, but we are doing everything possible from not just reviewing every single incident that occurs there, and reviewing it with our stakeholders, the medical examiner, Dr. Garcia, the NAP Care, our medical care providers, the county attorney. We sit down and discuss each and every incident and try to find where we, maybe we missed something. You know, if we make a mistake, we stand up and own it. We want to fix things. It is about transparency. Hiding behind a shield or sticking your head in the sand does nothing. We see that the fentanyl use, if you die in my jail, it's no different than if you die in the street. We will investigate that case as if it were a homicide. Our homicide team responds to that jail. They do, the exact same type of investigative effort is put into it. Recently, we just recently had an individual, unfortunately, pass away, we believe he was given fentanyl from another inmate, and that case has been presented to the county attorney's office for criminal prosecution. There is, there are a number of things, strategies we use, money, we pro-add technology, and we still research it. We take this very serious. It is not just the sheriff who takes it serious, it is every man and woman at that facility who takes pride in their work, who takes pride in what they mean to this community, and they take it seriously.
Great, thank you for being here, and I will leave it to, my other colleagues may have some questions for you, and I'm done, thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes, good morning, thank you. Good morning, Sheriff Nanos, thank you for being here. I think there'd be no argument that the corrections officer's job within the sheriff's department and within the prison system is probably the most difficult of all jobs in county law enforcement. We know that the tremendous effort that is being made and the commitment for these corrections officers is amazing, what they have to deal with, what they have to work with and how they do it. So I think it's obvious that this is probably the most difficult job in the whole department. But you do mention that you're down 104 corrections officers. And recently, as a result of several deaths in the jail system, it's created quite a community uproar and concern. There have been some demonstrations at the prison facility and I guess the issue that they're dealing with mostly is why and how did this happen? And there, by all indications, and I think you were even quoted in a news article, that staffing issues are of a serious nature and it would lead some to believe that perhaps the staffing issues contributed to these deaths because of the jail population and the reduced staffing oversight. My question is, do you still defend and think that this policy of terminating unvaccinated corrections officers was sound board policy in light of these deaths and in light of these staffing shortages?
I do. First of all, let me explain. First of all, staffing, I don't know that staffing contributed to the deaths, but clearly, as I started this morning's conversation about the young man who was able to make a round in 15 minutes versus 20 minutes, the more staff we have, we can throw at the problem, I think the safer we are in that facility. And to be able, if I can only make a round every 20 minutes, that's the best I can do. But you can clearly see if I can make it in 15 minutes, that five-minute time. In this case, in the case I spoke of this morning, it clearly saved that young man's life. If that CO had have been there a minute later, three minutes later, my goodness. So yes, staffing can certainly, I believe, help us there. We have a number of strategies that we're employing that probably, it gets into the weeds for you all, but one of the things we've noticed is this, we, today, we have two academies going, one is for our corrections officers and one is for our deputies. Our deputies, this is the third academy in the year that I've been here, that we have put 40 young men and women through that academy. Hiring deputies isn't such a problem. It's competitive, it's hard, we don't get the, you know, when I hired on, there were 2,000 applicants, today they may get 100 applicants. It's got its challenges, but what's really the challenge that you've pointed out, there is no harder, no job tougher than that CO job. I was one. I've been a cop eight years before I was a CO and that is a tough job. But it is a great profession and they just need to know that they offer some skill sets that my young deputies could use. My entire command staff, probably 80, 90% of them were corrections officers. This department, probably of just the commission side, probably 50% or better were corrections officers. Those people come to us with great skill sets of de-escalation, ability to communicate, look in a sense at an area and deal with it. We are now looking at utilizing that as a, not just a recruitment tool, but a training tool, to say, you want to be a deputy, we want you to be a deputy too, but we want you to start at our jail. And so that's going to be part of our strategy going forward.
One last question, Madam Chair, Sheriff Nanos, if I might. In the event of these unfortunate deaths that the community, the jail community has been dealing with, would it have been better during those times with such short staffing that we had corrections officers there, present in the jail, who are professionals, who are seasoned, who may or may, who may or may not have been vaccinated? Or was it better to have no corrections officers there at all?
Supervisor Christie, when I looked at that, when I came to this board back in the fall, one of the last inmates at that time that had passed away had come to us, had been in our facility for 30 days, had gone through all the protocols and was placed into an environment that we thought was safe and secure from COVID. He caught COVID and passed away. I have to look at, how does that happen when everybody is sequestered, if you will, except my staff? And so, you know, when we balance the deaths at that jail, yes, there were three or four fentanyl, but there were also three or four COVID deaths. I understand your question and your point, but to me, when I make that decision, I have to handle all areas, not just fentanyl, not just staffing, but COVID as well, and that was a part of the problems as well. The decision to mandate people getting vaccinated, to protect those we serve, was my decision. I could have very easily told the board, we're not doing it. But I believe that our job, our mission is to protect and serve, and how can I tell people we're not protecting you if we're not vaccinating?
And that message and that information that you just relayed, that has been conveyed to the families of those inmates who have died, correct?
I don't know that. I myself have never spoken to those families. My cell phone number is out there to the whole world, everybody can contact me. I've never turned down anybody's call, but I think it's, I don't want to appear to politicize some of this, I don't want to be calling a family member, my heart goes out to them. I feel for them to lose someone, particularly those individuals who do nothing but suffer from drug addiction. I struggle, as does this board, as does this community, with the fact that we have misdemeanors strictly there on drug abuse, yet there are bonds they can't even meet. I don't have the ability to release them, I don't have the ability to set bond or, I can only talk to the courts, the county attorneys, the public defenders, all of those committees that exist and say, you need to take a look at those in my jail and say, do they belong there? There are people there who, you know as well as I do, they belong there, they need to be there. But there are also those there that just suffer from mental illness, who just suffer from drug addiction, that we as a society, and I don't have those answers, I don't know that, but we as a society, we as the leaders of this community should be able to sit down at a table and say, how do we fix this? I don't know, I'm just, I'm just the sheriff, but I know there's a lot of bright minds in this community that should be able to come together and say, there's got to be a better way.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate your response to my questions and I appreciate you being here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Christie, are there any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott. And then we're running out of time, so this better be short.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Sheriff Nanos, and good morning, Chief Deputy Castigar. Thank you both for being here today. Just had one question. Given the pervasiveness of fentanyl and other opioids throughout our society, I'm sure the issues that we are seeing in our jail are not unique. Is there an opportunity to collaborate with and share best practices through your professional associations at the state and national level to see how other counties and correctional facilities are dealing with this issue?
Yes, and we have staff at our facility, our commanders, who not just attend conferences, but speak directly with command staff from other facilities, to include Maricopa and that. It is a struggle everywhere. You know, if it's not fentanyl, it's something else. I've done this job for 40-plus years, I have seen LSD was the drug of choice, then it went to meth, then it went to cocaine and then it went back to meth. It's fentanyl, it just, whatever the cheapest is to make and the most profitable, that's the scourge that we see. And again, it doesn't just impact that jail, the jail is just a reflection of the impact across the community.
Sheriff Bronson? Yes. Sheriff Nanos, thank you for joining us. Are you requiring boosters or is it just either one or the first or second dose of Pfizer, Moderna, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson?
It is, you have to have full vaccination, boosters are not required.
Boosters are not required, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Time is, we're out of time. All right, we are now moving on to call to the public. I believe we have several speakers, Madam Clerk, Benny White and Shirley Riquard. Is Benny available?
Madam Chair, he is available.
All right, proceed, you have three minutes, abide by the rules of civility or we'll turn off your mic. Mr. White.
Good morning, Commissioner Bronson, can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
My name is Benny White, I live in Tucson. I currently serve as a representative of the county administrator to the Pima County Elections Integrity Commission, and I'm a registered Republican. I speak to you this morning not as a Republican or as a representative of that election integrity commission, but as someone who has spent most of the last 14 years attempting to improve our election administration in Pima County and throughout the state. You are considering taking action today to further delay implementation of vote centers and the use of e-poll books with a contract by 10x. I asked you to vote no on both of those proposals this morning. It is time for the Pima County to move into the 21st century. You have concerns about the experience level of the elections director and possibly the recorder as well, as well as the professionalism and expertise of the 10x Corporation. I have looked at those contracts, I understand the details of the systems being involved, I spent most of my adult life dealing with military electronic warfare, so I'm very familiar with communication protocols and security of communications. I am satisfied that the proposal will work and it will improve our elections in Pima County in several ways. Number one, it will reduce the number of provisional ballots that cause delays of up to a week of the announcement of the final results. It will reduce the workload on the elections officials in the county and it will increase the confidence of our public in our election results. So please vote no on both of proposals to reconsider your previous approval of the contract to 10x and the implementation of vote centers in Pima County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. And now we have Ms. Riquard, is she available?
Yes.
Proceed, you have three minutes.
I'd like to express my concerns regarding voting centers and electronic poll books. I strongly urge you to vote no on those issues. The following are my reasons for why a no vote is important. This proposal creates chaos by having too many changes of a process or a system to occur at the same time. You're looking to change locations and to use two electronic systems and shift people who will need additional training. This proposal is an absolute assault on election integrity. A person who has average intelligence and has any common sense would know that when electronic equipment particularly is connected to the internet, that it can be hacked and manipulated. The problem arises is that there's precious little ability to detect what has occurred on the other side of a computer screen. Reduction of the voting polls to establish voting centers is a suppressive act. People go to polling places located closest to their homes where they have confidence in their neighbors, that they know that count, that their particular vote will be cast and counted. Changing the location will only lead to... People go to polling places located closest to their homes where they have confidence in their neighbors, that they know that count, that their particular vote will be cast and counted. Changing the location will only lead to discouragement of some citizens from voting due to the extremely long lines that will result. Voting centers will increase the opportunity for fraud as many people can choose to attempt to vote in multiple centers, which goes against the rule of one person, one vote, so that everyone will have an equal voice. Implementation of a system whereby ballots are printed out on the day of voting also contributes to more votes being cast without verification or integrity in relationship to the voting rolls themselves. I seriously question the motives of those who have placed their money behind driving these proposals. I do not want to hand over responsibility of public officials to private vendors that would have their own agendas in manipulating the outcome of elections. Plainly speaking, its most destructive outcome is that it makes cheating easier. As I stated previously, I disagree with electronic poll books as well as electronic voting machines. Electronic devices are tamperable and can be hacked. There's no accountability. Voting information may not be stored accurately or recorded as entered into the electronic system. This results in a lot more opportunity for fraud, once again, cheating. Election integrity is the utmost importance. Otherwise, we have no republic, we have no, not even an illusion of freedom. I strongly urge you to vote no on voting centers and vote no on electric poll books. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our call to the public. I want to note that we did receive a comment letter that are going to be read or be available on record. Seven are in opposition to vote centers and e-poll books, and only one was in support. And with that, let's move on to our next item, and that is, we've got two executive session items on the addendum items one and two. I would move to go into exec session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into exec session. If there's no objection, we'll convene in exec session and reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the exec session.
Ms. Lester, you appeared to have joined us twice, just FYI.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. And it sounds like it's, let me get out for it. Thank you.
All right, that's fixed. Okay. We're waiting for Supervisor Scott, Supervisor Hein, and Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott is on.
Okay. Why am I not seeing him? Okay, now I do. And Supervisor Christie is muted, but he appears to be on. And I am not seeing Supervisor Hein.
It appears we're still waiting for Supervisor Hein. Oh, there Supervisor Hein?
Yep, he just joined. All right. Welcome back to our regular session. We've concluded exec session. There were two items. Item number one, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisors, we would ask for item number one, that the board proceed as discussed in executive session.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
A second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections?
I object, Madam Chair.
Who is that?
Supervisor Christie.
Um, I also object. If there are no further objections, motion carries three to two. Moving on to item two, Mr. Brown.
Madam Chair, Board, Supervisors, we ask that the board proceed as discussed in executive session for item two as well.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move the item.
Still move.
There is a motion and I think, okay, no, I think Supervisor Gahalva made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing no objections, motion carries unanimously. We're now moving on back to the regular agenda. Uh, we are the Board of Supervisors now sitting as other boards. Flood Control District Board now. Item seven, item eight, item seven is the State of Arizona Game and Fish Commission Memorandum of Understanding. And item eight is a flood control district contract. Uh, does anybody wish to divide the question? If not, I'll move item seven and eight. There's a motion and a second. I don't know whether, who did it first, whether it was Supervisor Gahalva or?
Supervisor Scott.
Okay, Supervisor Scott. If there's no discussion, or are there any objections hearing none? Motion carries. Items seven and eight are approved. We now move on to the Board of Supervisors sitting as the board. And the approval of the consent calendar. Does anybody want to divide the question, the question on consent calendar?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to divide the question and pull items numbers two, three, four, and five.
Two, three, four, and five. Okay. Any other, any other board members wish to pull any items? If not, I will move the remainder of the consent calendar with the exceptions of two, three, four, and five. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any discussion, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item number two, under Grant Management and Innovation, uh, City of Tucson Amendment Number Two. I'll move the item for purposes of discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Christie.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, these are becoming more and more frequent as far as funding is, is concerned in these areas of, uh, emergency food and shelter, as well as include reimbursement. Transportation services provided by the City of Tucson's Sun Trans Bus Service. Specifically, Sun Trans supports logistics in shuttling asylum seekers between shelter sites and Tucson International Airport. The reimbursement of eligible expenditures also includes providing food, shelter, and transportation to asylum seekers. And these services keep legally present homeless immigrant families off the streets and help them to reach their relatives or sponsors within the United States. We're seeing a lot of that being continued into, uh, extensions. Initially, the original amount, amount, uh, was $545,700. Uh, the prior amendment amount was $1,315,000. This amendment is asking for $440,000 additional and a revision in a total amount of $2.3 million. And the parties involved want to increase the city's funding for reimbursement of emergency food and hotel shelter, as well as transportation services provided by the city's Sun Trans Bus Service for expenses incurred from January 1st through June 30th. Additionally, uh, they are, they are factoring this amount, uh, according to the background, that it be amended to update, update the city's allocation-based method of number of hours times $96 cost per hour for local transportation services. This was never put out to bid. It appears that it was, it was singularly allocated to Sun Trans, uh, which leads one to believe that it can now afford to have free Sun Trans service to all and anyone, uh, because the COVID monies are going to funding Sun Trans as a partial element in this grant. Um, I would like to see a breakdown of funds from the ARPA grants that have been given to the county, like this one, which is then being given to the City of Tucson to support such, such activities. A basic breakdown of allocations. Uh, I'm going to be talking about these on the following, um, items on the consent calendar. So maybe some of these can be, um, uh, included in that breakdown of allocations. But this is just a, to me, another element of providing services for asylum seekers. Uh, and additionally, uh, supporting Sun Trans Bus Service to support them. So I have great, uh, issues with the amounts of money that are just being funneled through here. And, uh, I would like to see that breakdown, uh, the monies from the county to the city to support these activities. And I will be voting no for this.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Any further comments, Ms. Lester? Did you wish to say something? I thought you had your?
I did. But if I may, Chair Bronson, I just want to clarify a couple of things that the, these are not providing necessarily additional funds as we've reported in, uh, reports, I believe, the most recent, you know, at the end of last week, where we'd indicated how much funding is being allocated for a variety of services related to the asylum seekers. Some of that fund, uh, some of that funding is expended through contracts with Catholic Community Services and the city. So I understand they may be large numbers. They are not. In addition to what we have indicated before is the cap that we will be spending. I also want to be clear that none of this is ARPA or CARES money or, or COVID money. That these funds are from FEMA through, uh, emergency food shelter, uh, grants that we've received specifically to support that asylum seeker project. We're happy to provide all of the granularity you'd like on all of the grants, and we will do that. But I just want a little clarity that it's not additional funds. It's actually contractual capacity under the current funding mechanism, and it is not COVID money. But thank you. We will get you the reports you asked.
Yeah, and, and hold off before you finalize, uh, my request on that because it may be able to be, uh, included in some other agenda items that are coming up, that you could provide a breakdown on this. So thank you for that clarity. Um, uh, but it does say in the background that, uh, the funding sources required are the Emergency Food and Shelter National Board Program pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. So these are ARPA funds.
Chair Bronson, under Supervisor Christie, uh, there is a very broad amount of funding available, but through the FEMA program, they are not designated for anything related to, it, it, that specific program is emergency food and shelter. Uh, and we're glad to provide that kind of clarity. You're under the umbrella of the billions or trillions of dollars under ARPA. Yes, it is not directed simply to the provision of COVID services. I want to provide that clarity.
Okay, if you could break it down in that manner, that would be very helpful.
Happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lester. Thank you Supervisor Christie. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve this item. Any further discussion? Any objections?
I object.
One objection. Hearing no further objection, motion carries four to one. Moving on to item three, I'll move the item for purposes of discussion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here again is another, um, element of the entire process. So this one is a, um, a grant to fund one point, 187, $1,187,000 to Catholic Community Services of Southern Arizona to provide for emergency food and shelter to families and individuals encountered by the Department of Homeland Security and to extend the term of the contract and the scope of services. And this is coming from the Emergency Food and Shelter National Board Program Fund. Uh, in the contract about, as I said, of $1.1 million. Uh, the background states that this money is dedicated, and the goals of this monies is to reimburse eligible expenditures, including staffing at Casa Alitas Welcoming Center and hotels and food and shelter at Casas Aleas Welcoming Center. And it's to help defray costs in providing shelter, food, and appropriate services to asylum seekers. Um, I, I would like to know currently, what is the occupancy of Casas Aleas, Alitas?
Ms. Lester?
As I'm, uh, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, it varies from day to day. I'm reading from last week's report, um, that gives us an idea. We received, um, uh, there were 780 individuals last week, 111 per day. Our largest day was 203. Uh, the overall capacity provided, we, I'm looking at, on, um, Casa Alitas was at 39. We had 117 individuals at Red Roof. Uh, and then that is in addition to about 13 families that are at Comfort Suites that are part of a different program under the Community Workforce Development. Uh, so as people are coming into the Casa Alitas center and then depending upon the capacity, again, since, uh, April of last year, we've had almost 26,000 individuals come through. So we can, we do receive weekly reports, again, 780 last week with about, on any given day, 39 at Casa Alitas, about 117 at Red Roof.
Wow. And why is this, uh, request retroactive to December 1st of 2021?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, it was getting the information back from our partner at Catholic Community Services.
And then why has the grant amount doubled from April 1st through December 31st, uh, of, uh, 2020, of 2021 to the tune of $669,000?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, that is simply based on the, uh, the increase we're seeing regularly in the number of individuals who are being brought in from the federal partners and brought to the facility and into Pima County. We've had a significant increase, uh, in the folks that are being released by the Department of Homeland Security.
In the background material, it stipulates, uh, the scope of the services, uh, and the amounts involved with them. And it, I'll just read them that the funding so far, uh, since December 20 of 2021 includes $28,000 for food at Casas Alitas and hotels. Staffing at Casas Alitas and hotels comes to $58,000. Overflow hotel of almost $83,000. And security at the hotels of, oh, almost $27,000 for a total of $197,361. Then it goes on to, uh, illuminate that it's January through March of '22. That same food at Casas Aleas and hotels came to $105,000. The staffing at both those facilities came at $225,000. And the security at both facilities came to $165,000 for a total just under $500,000. And it goes on to, uh, stipulate in April through June of 2022 that the food at both those facilities came to another $105,000. Staffing came to another quarter of a million. Security came to 185 for a total of 495 total, 495,000. All coming to a grand total of all funded services of $1.1 million. Um, is, is Catholic Community Services operating the hotels in addition to the Cas, the Casas Alitas Welcoming Center?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, yes.
So when did that happen? They were only designated to be?
They have, well, I, they have been providing some of the oversight and directions. They allocate individuals out to the, uh, to the, as the individuals are brought into the welcoming center and then determinations are based, based on family units or individuals when they are moved to the, to the offsite locations. We provide the security and some health services at the site, but primarily all is provided as they move that direction out by the Catholic Community Services. And I just, as, as you have well pointed out, uh, one of the, one of the, the real difficulties we have is with the fluctuation in the cost and the amount of, of the dollars. I was noticing that, uh, at one point, you know, the record high, a, a record week was 1,367. We're now at 780. It has been very difficult, uh, for this community to understand what are the numbers that will be brought to us by the federal partners on any given day. Uh, but to protect the, the health and safety of this community, we're trying to make sure that all of those individuals have a place to go and are not simply released on the streets. It is also a reminder that all of these programs are being funded by the dollars that we receive from the federal government.
Speaking of the federal government, what is the impact on all of this that we've just been discussing of the FEMA Processing Center at, uh, Los Realos, Realos?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I do not know the direct impact of, of that facility. They are coming in from other parts of the communities. We'll be happy to provide a follow-up report to you and the other board members.
That would be great because if they're coming in through FEMA and then being released into our community, to our facilities, that would definitely have an impact, I would think.
Yes.
And perhaps you could include in your initial report, uh, some kind of a merging of all of the items that we just discussed here in item number three. Uh, again, uh, it seems like Catholic Community Services is mopping up here. They're getting all kinds of money in hotels, uh, and, 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 um, staffing. Um, I think there really needs to be a breakdown on that, and, and this could be included in your report. And stay tuned because I'm, I'm sure there'll be more in four and five, and I will be voting against this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve. Um, any objections? I think Supervisor?
I object.
Yeah, I think you object. If they're not? If there's no further objection, motion carries four to one. Moving on to item four, Partners in Health, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second Supervisor Christie.
Yes, we're paying Partners in Health a contract amount for consulting of almost a quarter of a million dollars over two years. My first question, why are we contracting this out and why do we need consultants on this matter?
If I'm, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, if I may, I'd like to ask Dr. Garcia to respond to items four and five.
Let me get to, let me get through four first.
Oh, I'm sorry, four, well, four, I apologize, thank you.
Dr. Garcia?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, Acting Administrator Lester, thank you very much and good morning to you. This is a CDC-funded contract from the, that comes through the Arizona State Department of Health Services that is worth, the overall value of the contract is worth $9.5 million. This contractor in particular has been a partner in the development of this program and is assisting us with the execution of it. This contract itself represents 2% of the total value of the entirety of the award. They bring a skill set that allows us to be highly targeted in the communities and census tracts where we are conducting this vaccine equity program.
I appreciate that information, especially providing the skill set. Going into the background, again, it says the program outcomes are improved infrastructure and access for all vaccination services, including COVID, influenza, and general pediatric and adult immunizations. Weren't we doing those before the pandemic?
We sure were Supervisor Christie, Chair Bronson. We absolutely were. What we're doing, what we're doing is we're improving our capacity to be targeted about where and when and the modalities by which we deliver these kinds of interventions. This contractor in particular has a lot of experience in being able to weave all these things together. They've done so in a variety of settings, most notably in developing world settings, but increasingly here in the U.S. during the last decade. So we are leveraging our own experience and our own infrastructure with some of their analytic capacity and support.
It would seem that with our history, that FEMA County Health Department already know how to do all of this and that we don't need consultants to administrate a vaccine equity program?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, again, you know, this consultant is being brought in specifically to support this $9.5 million grant that has a relatively short period of execution and therefore we do require their assistance.
And I guess, Madam Chair, if I could also ask Ms. Lester, in her reports that are becoming more and more volatile and this as we continue through the agenda, if she could include how much total money has been granted to Partners in Health by FEMA County and for exactly what purposes? I'd appreciate that included in, in that analysis. Thank you, Madam Chair, I will be voting against this as well.
Thank you Supervisor Christie. Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Any objections?
I object.
One objection. Any further objections? Hearing that motion carries four to one. Moving on to item five, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here again, this would probably be helpful to be included in Ms. Lester's report of all these various funding sources and for what they go for. Looking through the background in this particular item, SJM Premier Medical Group is to provide for medical support for refugee populations, extend contract term involving emergency housing and medical support to a contract amount of $1.2 million. It states further in the background, from the opening of this service at the Red Roof Inn on August 25th, 2021 until February, a total of 13,343 refugees have been housed in this location. 7,000, a little over 7,000, were COVID positive and the remainder were at high risk due to the relationships with the COVID positive refugees. All of the refugees at the Red Roof Inn are provided health care under this contract and that would include 11 hours a day of in-person care to refugees that have tested positive for COVID-19, are suspected of being infected, or are at high risk. Care will be provided seven days a week. Again, the original amount and the prior amendment amounts and this amendment amount total $1.8 million. And I have specific questions now because this raises some concerns or, I guess, questions more than concerns, but initially we were told that the Red Roof Inn was to house asylum seekers that perhaps were COVID infected. So now, I think what we need to do, or at least what I'm looking for, is to have a population definition. Because so far, we have the population of asylum seekers, we have the population of refugees, we have the population of homeless, which were included in that Red Roof Inn issue. So we have another population of homeless, an additional population of COVID-infected individuals, and now according to the background of this, we have an additional population, immigrant families. Asylum seekers, refugees, homeless, COVID-infected, and immigrant families. I would like to have a breakdown of what differentiates each of these populations, what their definitions are, and also the original scope of the Red Roof Inn project because this appears to me to be nothing more than a really blatant example of mission creep. Started out with one population and now we're up to five. And the, and the monies keep coming and coming and coming and I don't think we know who's being sequestered or sheltered at the Red Roof Inn and what, what designates the populations between asylum seekers, refugees, homeless, COVID-infected, and immigrant families. Plus, all those that have been, I guess the word is touched by DHS. So there's a sixth element into all this. So I would like a breakdown of what those populations are, how they are derived to be in that population, the history of the Red Roof Inn sheltering and its relationship with Casas Alitas Welcoming Center and Catholic Community Services. So Ms. Lester, I hope you can glean from those four agenda items a report that can reflect all of the questions I've tried to ask here. It does get confusing, but I'm not the one making all these different populations and different scopes of service or creating this, what I would call mission creep. So I will be voting against this one as well, Madam Chair, and I thank you for your patience and I will look forward to Ms. Lester's report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Heinz, I think.
Thank you, and I, you know, I just wonder if we would be having the same amount of scrutiny from Supervisor Christie if the refugees and asylum seekers were coming from Ukraine? Thank you.
Thanks for that comment. And with that, if there's no further discussion, are there any, I'll call for the, call the question, any objections?
I object.
One objection. Any further objections? Hearing that motion carries four to one. And we're now at 10:33, time for about a 10-minute break, and we'll see you in 10 minutes.
Supervisors back from our break, so we'll reconvene our regular board meeting of March 1. And we now move to the regular agenda, Board of Supervisors, item number 10, in-person Board of Supervisors meeting. We continue this item from 12/21 and 1/422. What's the pleasure of the Board on this item? I would like personally to resume meetings at our next meeting in March. But again, what's the pleasure of the Board? I'm going to move that, well, let me just, for purposes of discussion, move that we resume in-person meetings at our next meeting in March. And Madam Chair, that would be March 15 or 14?
Madam Chair, that would be March 15.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Supervisor Grohba.
Yeah, are we still going to require masks in the boardroom?
I had a discussion with Dr. Cullen. I do not think that's necessary for supervisors. We will be behind plexiglass, but her recommendation is that those who are attending the call to the public or attending from outside of Pima County to speak regarding an item on the agenda or a call to the public, that they come masked because we do not know whether or not they have been vaccinated. We know that all board members have been vaccinated and boosted.
Well, Chair Bronson, I don't know, I mean, I don't know that all of us have been boosted or are current, just so, I mean, everyone has said they've been vaccinated. I don't know about the booster, but if we're going to still require everyone in our county buildings to wear masks, we shouldn't be an exemption. We should all just wear masks. I don't think it's a very big deal. I don't mind going in person. I think that our numbers are looking better, but until we're at low to moderate, the CDC guidelines are pretty clear about us wearing masks inside, so I don't know what the issue is.
Well, Supervisor Christie.
Issue is, we don't need to be masked up at the Board of Supervisors meeting. All the numbers are falling. We've been virtual for a year now. The public deserves to be able to address us in person. We will have safety precautions that will be instituted with accordance to the Department of Health that will protect us. By coming in to a board meeting as a supervisor with a mask on is absolutely ridiculous and unnecessary, and I can't understand why there's such an issue that we have to wear masks in public when we're isolated virtually from that public, and they deserve the ability to see us in person. We need to stop this mask nonsense once and for all.
Well, Chair Bronson, I mean, that comment is the concern that I have. I mean, there shouldn't be a big issue with wearing a mask. I don't know what the huge problem is. We are still in high transmission, if you look at the CDC website, if you look at our own website. I think that as long as our guidance is clear, that everyone in the room needs to be wearing a mask, then I have no problem voting to go in person. But if we're going to have, like, caveats where depending on where you live, or if you come out of town, or, I mean, that's confusing and unnecessary. Once the numbers are low enough that we don't require a mask in our buildings, then I think that it's okay for us not to have to wear a mask in our boardroom, but the rules should apply to all of us.
And to your point Supervisor Grohba, it is confusing that we still have to have, and we'll discuss it later, a mask in our county buildings where the whole county now does not have to wear a mask. You talk about confusion, but you're just adding to the confusion by not coming into the board meeting without a mask. That's the confusing part.
It's not confusing, it's called public health. It's a recommendation that I'm...
All right, let's stop bickering. Let's behave as adults, please. Any other comments by board members?
Chair Bronson, could we hear from Dr. Cullen?
I don't think she's available. Maybe Dr. Garcia is. I do not see...
Dr. Garcia is available.
Dr. Garcia.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Heinz. So this Friday, the Centers for Disease Control will change their framework by which they are reporting the kind of mitigation strategies that should be indeed in effect across the various counties in the United States. That will be published every Thursday on their website. As of last Thursday, Supervisor Grohba is absolutely correct that we are still, Pima County is still designated at a high level, and therefore, when you look at the specific guidelines that they recommend, that would continue to recommend universal mask use. I will offer the caveat that we anticipate that by this Friday, we will drop into the medium level of transmission. So the new color scheme is orange for high level, yellow for medium, and green for low. I believe that on Friday, by Friday, we may likely be in that place. I can't guarantee it. I'm just looking at the case numbers as they are being reported by the Centers for Disease Control. Remember that the other things that the new schema also envisions is a hospital capacity metrics, two hospital capacity metrics. Both of those are trending in the right direction, but I can't tell you for certain that by Friday, we will indeed hit that yellow, but I believe that there is a high likelihood that before our next meeting that we may be there.
So then, Dr. Garcia, could we perhaps, just, would it make sense then to have the supervisors just follow whatever the administrative guidance that Acting County Administrator Lesher and you and Dr. Cullen put forward for all of our county buildings then? And if things go up, then we're all in masks, because we should, you know, we're leaders, we should be demonstrating what needs to be done for safety purposes. And if we're at yellow or lower, then we aren't wearing masks in our county buildings, and of course, we wouldn't then wear masks in the metodias.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Heinz, the Acting County Administrator Ms. Lesher and our Health Department team have been in conversations about how we might modify the building mask policy. I think one of the things that we feel fairly strongly about is making sure that we create an environment where people who feel like they need to be masked, either because they're older than 65 years of age, because they are immunocompromised because they have underlying chronic disease, or because they live in a household where those things happen. We want to make sure that we create an environment where our signage and our norms really support those individuals making that decision. But we also want to make sure that we make it clear that for a vast majority of folks, once we are in that less than orange level, it may be appropriate for mask use to be suspended.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. And I don't know who that was.
Supervisor Christie?
Supervisor Christie.
I have a question for Dr. Garcia. Dr. Garcia, in your opinion, is COVID more contagious in privately owned buildings than it is in county-owned buildings?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I don't think the issue is whether COVID is more contagious in public or privately owned buildings. That COVID is more of an issue, COVID transmission is more of an issue in public buildings where there will be a variety of people from a variety of households gathering together.
Just to carry that further, if I walked into Walmart or Costco with, which is a privately owned company and a privately owned building, not a county-owned building, there are hundreds of people there at any time with no mask requirements, is the air in county-owned buildings more contagious than it is in Costco or Walmart or Albertsons?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, there's no reason to believe that there is any difference.
So if there's no difference, then why do we have to have any kind of face mask restrictions or requirements in county-owned buildings? We'll get to that later, but at the board meetings.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, as I stated, we are actively in Ms. Lesher's office looking at how we modify that county building mask policy to reflect what the current level of transmission is, and again, to be permissive of mask use by that group of folks who can benefit from it.
And the background you provided, or Ms. Lesher provided on this subject, with all the protocols of a in-public board meeting, with the social distancing, the mask-wearing, the six feet apart, all of those things are still pretty stringent, and it looks like that they've covered pretty much any kind of concerns for COVID transmission. So with all of those in place, my understanding is that if we continue to keep those in place, then face masks by Board of Supervisors members are not required.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I believe that's a policy decision that is up to the Board to make.
Thank you. All right, there's any more discussion? There's a motion on the floor, Supervisor Grohba.
Yeah, so the question is, if we're going to go in person, are we still going to follow the guidelines of our county buildings? And if we are, then I'm, we can, I'll vote in favor, but if we're going to have a lot of exceptions and different rules for different people, then I'll just vote no.
All right, thank you for that comment. Supervisor Christie.
Could you just clarify the motion, really?
Yeah, the motion is to resume in-person meetings starting March 15, and as recommended, I think we already have recommendations from our Health Department and from Dr. Garcia. We are going to be assuming we're in, we're not in the high transmission phase. Should we still be in the high transmission phase? We'll probably have to revisit that, but my motion is to continue, is to go back to in-person meetings with no mask requirements for the Board of Supervisors, but, and somehow I have lost everybody. I don't know what happened. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
We can see you, too.
Yeah.
Well, I can't see me. I don't know what just happened. Okay, I'm joining you now as a panelist. Let's see, I just went, okay. All right, I'm going to have to log out and log back in. I don't know what's going on. Okay, it looks like I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Don't know what happened. I just went down. All right, there's a motion on the floor to resume in-person board meetings, provided that we are not in high transmission, to commence March 15. Let's do a roll call vote.
There's a second, too, if you need it.
Yeah, you made a second, yeah. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Grohba?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes, by your vote of three to two, motion carries. We now move on to item 11, release of, well, we've actually dealt with this one at the, with the executive session item. So Supervisor Scott, you put this on, but I believe we've already made that recommendation, so we can move them to, and we dealt with item 12, so we're now on to item 13, unfinished business, extension and expansion of pandemic outbreak leave. I think we are ready to make a decision, but I think Supervisor Grohba wanted to continue.
Right.
Do you want to explain your...
Yes, so we had a meeting with, our office had a meeting with HR, Finance, Benefits, and Ms. Lesher was out on vacation, and then the next week, several key people from the other departments were out, and so we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, and we're hoping to continue this until then, until our next meeting.
What's the pleasure of the Board? Do you wish to continue, or are you ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Grohba, you want to continue? Do you want to make a motion to continue?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we continue this item until our next board meeting on March 15, in order to give all of the key players an opportunity to vote.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
There's motion and a second to continue. Any further discussion? I'll call the question, roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Oh.
Supervisor Grohba?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
No, by your vote of three, two, we will continue this item. Let's now move on to item 14, petition for relief of taxes. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to Development Services, items 15 through 19. These are final plats with assurances. I'll move items, if nobody wishes to divide the question, I'll move items 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to Finance and Risk Management, item 20. I'll move that item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item 21, Resolution 2022-9 regarding execution of documents by Finance and Risk Management. I'll move the item for purposes of discussion, but I do have a question. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Lesher, could you explain exactly why we need this resolution?
Chair Bronson, it is my understanding that as we work with the state and our various funding authorities, that there is a requirement, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, but this one is, is we do receive a bequest that comes in from people, bequests in consuls and in wills to benefit the animal care facility, and we need to designate, as it has been indicated by the consuls, of that requirement, the Finance Department to be in receipt of, to receive those funds following the execution of the wills.
Thank you. That's the clarification I needed. So there's a motion on the floor to approve and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. We're moving on to item 22, which we've also dealt with in flood control. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Any discussion? There are no objections. Motion carries unanimously. We're now on hearings. These are franchise license permits, liquor licenses, items 23, 24, 25. Item 26 is a permanent extension of premises patio permit. These are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to items 23 through 26? If not, I move a closed public hearing on those items. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to item 27. This is a hearing regarding proposed revised fee schedule in ordinance number 2022-3. What's the pleasure of the Board on this item?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie.
I have some issues with this particular request by the county recorder on these fee structures and a reduction in the fees. Very simply, I've got a couple of... structures and a reduction in the fees. Very simply, I've got a couple of, of items that I wanted to discuss on this, but I would like to, first of all, note that the county recorder says at the, at the end of her, well, let me do this first. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item till the March 15th meeting.
I'll second that motion. Supervisor Christie?
Thank you. At the, at the, at the bottom of, of the county recorder's analysis of why she feels compelled to reduce all of the fees, she mentions quite specifically that, that this will not be, the reduction in fees will not be impactful to the operation of her budget or her office. Yet, by doing so, she's going to be reducing the, the revenue and the budget of her office with these fee reductions by half a million dollars. I find it very difficult to understand how she can make that statement, and that's why I'm asking for a continuation for more evaluation on that issue, because what I don't want to have happen is she reduces the fees by half a million dollars and then comes back to the Board and wants monies out of the general fund to make up for that loss. So I need a better and more definitive explanation as to how this fee reduction will not impact her budget or her office or her mission by a half a million dollars. So that's, that's one area that I, I would like more definitive information on at the next meeting, and that's why I'm asking for it to be continued. And then, Madam Chair, I received a letter that I'd like to share with the Board from a constituent that says, "I represent a company that's based in Tucson with 40 staff, all living in Pima County. Our service consists of purchasing the recorded documents from the recorder's office and then indexing the information into a geographical index database. Every title company in Pima County is a shareholder of a corporation that shares in the expense of the service. Since 1999, my company has spent more than $1.4 million on images from the recorder's office, and we have a couple of friendly competitors that do the same. The proposal would allow an entity to purchase everything we have accumulated for a mere $8,000. Personally, I cannot understand the reasoning behind such a drastic fee change. I know the recorder has several staff positions as well as equipment and support required to scan and maintain these images. I would think the current pricing model would help greatly in offsetting those costs." And he's requesting that the recorder please consider removing the section, "recorder's subscription fees and additional services of the fee schedule revision." I think this letter indicates that there is some real questions with this free, fee revision and restructuring, that it could have negative impacts on businesses here in Pima County. It could open itself up to a can of worms by allowing outside competitors from anywhere, even outside the United States, to come in and do this kind of service, but this company has spent over $1.4 million. So I would like the county recorder to address this issue and then to give a definitive and analytic detail about how half a million dollar reduction in her budget won't have any impact on her operation. Thank you.
Not only impact on her operation, but on our general fund. Because the previous recorder actually impacted our general fund in a positive way. I feel this is going to impact our general fund in a negative way. Chair Bronson?
The word.
We have one speaker. I think, just, I want to clarify from the clerk. We have one speaker. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, that is correct. Roger Harrison is on the line.
All right. Let's hear from the speaker and then we'll move to Supervisor Garhova.
Hello, this is Roger Harrison from Data Services. I think Supervisor Christie expressed my concerns quite clearly. And I'd only like to add that in ASRS 3912103, the in-person, expressly talks about purchasing records and it says that the value of the reproduction of the commercial market is best determined by the public body and a reasonable fee for cost of time, materials, and equipment personnel in producing such reproduction. So I think at $500 a year to purchase all the documents that are recorded at the Pima County Recorder's offices would not represent fair market value or even be a reasonable fee for the cost of time, materials. Last year, we spent $65,000 for the images and as Supervisor Christie said, we have other competitors that did the same thing. To go from $65,000 to $500 is kind of unreasonable, in my opinion. And also, from 1999, the images from 1982 to 1999, we actually gave them to the recorder's office. We scanned them at our expense and at great expense and gave them to the recorder's office in exchange for some microfiche that they gave to us. So they're kind of giving away our work product for $8,000. Kind of a little heartbreaking there. And that's all. And thank you very much for letting us, letting me speak. It's my first time I've done this and I thought this was a very professional and I appreciated talking to you all on Zoom or WebEx or whatever this is.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Supervisor Garhova?
Yeah, I believe we have representatives from the county attorney, the county recorder's office in order to explain. So I'm wondering if they can sort of chime in at this point?
That's fine, but I want this item continued. There are too many unanswered questions. We got this late. I'm really concerned about moving forward with this today. Is there somebody from the recorder's office that can address this briefly?
Yes, Hillary Hyzer should be on the call. She's my Assistant Chief Deputy, and she'll be presenting on this.
Apparently not.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Bronson. Board of Supervisors, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. Thank you, Supervisor Christie, for your very insightful questions regarding our revenue. I do have answers to that. The overall revenue that the recorder's office has is a little over $7.8 million with our fiscal year 21 revenue. In fiscal year 2020, we had $6.7 million in revenue, and that shows an increase of 65% from fiscal year 2019, which we had 2.5 million in revenue. I bring that to your attention and to the attention of the Board, because in 2019, Arizona State Legislature passed flat recording fees, which caused an overall increase in revenue that we received for recording documents by the citizens of Pima County. Our revenue did increase 65% overall for recording costs. I also want to point out that the ARS Public Records Laws require that we provide cost of recovery for the records that we produce for the public. Our previous fee schedule was put into place to cover the costs, to cover costs of technological improvements in the office in 2016. Since that time, we have recovered the costs of those technological improvements. And after speaking with our county attorney, Dan Jerkwood, and county administrator Huckleberry, we determined that the cost of services, the current fee schedule exceeds the cost of service recovery. So we were actually charging our residents and our customers more money and making profit off of them rather than just recovering our costs. It does not cost us anything any longer to provide digital images to the residents of Pima County and to the businesses of Pima County.
Certainly, could you explain that? How could it not cost us anything?
Because we've already made the investments in that technology. So the original technology investments that we made, we made capital investments to do scanning of our index, scanning of all of our document, recorded documents. We now have paid for the cost recovery of that investment. So we have all of these documents digitally now, so it actually does not cost us anything to provide that document digitally.
It does. It costs you time and materials.
It, it doesn't cost us the time and materials based off of the current fee schedule. Our revised proposed fee schedule covers the costs of what it, actually providing those documents to our customers. The service, the recording, subscription services, those three, we have three main groups that use that. We have title companies, we have people in the development-related services field, and we have government agencies. We did an internal cost-benefit analysis, and we also did a substantial best practices review of all of the other counties to see what they were charging similar entities within their counties to be able to have access to that information. We determined that a annual $500 flat fee would cover the maintenance costs of our current technology program and that we would be able to provide the same information to our customers as we're currently providing at a flat fee, therefore streamlining it and providing more efficient services to the business community. We've also determined that the overall reduction in revenue, that $503,000 that we referenced in there, that is a reduction in revenue strictly from the subscription services that we were giving, that we were charging to various companies. So as I stated earlier, our current fee schedule has already recovered the cost of our services, and therefore we were making a profit off of recorded documents that are really the custody of the residents of Pima County and the citizens of the state of Arizona. It's our responsibility to provide this information to them in a manner that is economical and easily accessible, which is what this fee schedule does. We are following the same trends of other jurisdictions who are looking at their comprehensive fee schedules and trying to find efficiencies and reduce costs to residents and businesses to ensure that they're able to provide services and go about their book of business in an economic way. So this is a similar trend to that of the town of Morana, the town of Aurora Valley, the town of Sabrina, who do critical review of their comprehensive fee schedules on a yearly basis. Additionally, the other fees proposed within this revised fee schedule conform with statute changes that have occurred since 2016. We've had several statute changes that mandate flat fees for voter registration data requests, and we also have, as I mentioned previously, the statute changes that, for the cost of recording, which actually garnered us 65% more in revenue. Our total revenue base that we get from recording documents, we have a special revenue fund that comes, the document recording revenue fund. So from every, you know, recording dollar that we charge, we take a portion of that, we put it into our document recording fund. That document recording fund has a balance of about $1.5 million. We use that fund specifically to make capital improvement expenses in our department. So if we need to purchase new scanners, new computer equipment, we use it from that fund, which is a special revenue fund. So no general fund dollars are used in that instance. I'm happy to answer any other questions that Chair Bronson, you have, or you Supervisor Christie, or any of the other supervisors. Thank you.
And I don't think that really addressed Mr. Harrison's concern, but thank you for the information. Any other questions? Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Okay, just to remind everybody, the motion was to continue this item till the next board meeting. And I think that was Supervisor Scott.
Yes. Madam Chair, as a general rule, if one of my colleagues is requesting additional time to get additional information on an item, and I find the, find that request to be reasonable and not dilatory, I'm going to approve it. I approved Supervisor Garhova's request to continue a previous item for that reason. But I did want to ask either Ms. Hyzer or the recorder, would there be any issues posed by continuing this item to the next meeting and delaying the fees being put in place?
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Scott, thank you for the question. The recorder's office would have no issues continuing the item to 315 to better answer the questions of the supervisor. We would be happy to provide additional information for whatever you deem necessary to be able to make an informed decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyzer. And with that, I would ask also, it sounds like we will continue this. I, I think it would be beneficial to have our previous recorder weigh in on this. And I would ask that our current recorder at least check with this, with our previous recorder to get her feedback on this request. I would, I would think that would be valuable.
Chair Bronson?
Yes.
I don't think that, that's our position to ask our current recorder to check in with the previous recorder. These, they're making significant changes in the office based on improved technology and access. I, I think it's really out of line for, for this governing body to ask our current recorder to do that. So I, I was comfortable voting on the side of now. I'm happy to support, you know, extending it to the 15th, but I don't think, you know, we're asking our county recorder, Gabriela Gafadas-Kelly, to check in with the previous recorder is anywhere in our realm of what we should be doing.
I, we have to agree to disagree. I, I really think it would be valuable to have her input. She was recorder for a number of years and certainly brings knowledge and expertise to this item.
And then Supervisor Bronson, just to follow up, I would think that if we, Chair, excuse me, Chair Bronson, I do think that it would make sense then if, you know, there's any questions about what's happening now with current technology, that it would make sense for, if, if our current recorder feels the need to check in with other counties that are implementing a lot of these changes, that makes sense to me. But, I mean, that would be her discretion.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie, I think?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hyzer gave a very comprehensive and detailed analysis. And I must say that the preparation that she provided was excellent. However, it is a bit overwhelming. I would appreciate Ms. Hyzer and the county recorder to provide the Board with a written analysis of what just was conveyed by Ms. Hyzer, as well as the county recorder's own opinion. And as, as our previous recorder is concerned, our current recorder need not check in with her, but we should invite the former recorder to submit her opinions on this matter. That way, there's no checking in by anybody. It's simply a courtesy that could be extended to the Board by the former recorder.
And I'd be very happy to ask her, and I concur with your analysis. She may very well not want to weigh in, but given her past experience and number of years in office, I think she might add some information and some insights that would be helpful in, as we try as a Board, to either accept the recommendation of the county recorder or to amend it. And with that, there's no further discussion. I'll call the question, roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Garhova?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
We're voting to continue the item to March 15th.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes, by your vote of four to one, we'll continue the item. And that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. And then we're going to move on. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We still have elections. Let's see.
The addendum.
Did we do items 20 and 21?
Madam Chair, yes, you did.
Okay. I didn't check them off on my agenda. Sorry. Yep, we're now, we're back to the addendum agenda and item three. I put this item on to request a reconsideration. addendum agenda and item three. I put this item on to request a reconsideration regarding the authorization of vote centers. It is a request for reconsideration. Since I voted in favor, I, of the item, I can re, I'm, I'm going to recommend that we reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to reconsider. Is there a discussion?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In a recent-
This is, yeah, this is a request for reconsideration. We're not actually discussing the item at this point.
In order to consider reconsideration, we need to discuss the item.
We can't discuss the item until we reconsider, unless the vote for reconsideration is approved. That's just a point of order.
So there's no discussion?
There's no discussion on the item itself, that you can discuss whether or not you want to reconsider. But you're not, not the item itself.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, would you like to do a roll call vote on the motion to reconsider the item?
Yeah, well, I think we, we, yeah, if there's, yeah, let's do a roll call vote on the motion to reconsider.
This is a motion to reconsider the item. Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhalba?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Bronson?
Yes, by your vote of three to two, we are now reconsidering. So item B is moved at this point. And now, we move on to item four. This is a request for reconsideration to suspend Board of Supervisors Rule Number H3 pursuant to Board of Supervisors Rule Number zero dash one, O dash one. And this is in regard to Penex Software Solutions. So again, this is simply a motion for reconsideration. I will move reconsideration and the request to suspend the rule, as I mentioned. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor, I mean, Miss, Madam Clerk.
So we need to suspend the rule prior to having a request for reconsideration. So if we can do the motion to suspend the rule first?
Correct. I'm sorry. All right. So I'm going to request that we suspend Board of Supervisors Rule H3 pursuant to Board of Supervisors Rule O dash one. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhalba?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Bronson?
Yes, by your vote of three, two, we are now, item B and C become moot. My only comment at this point is that there really has been no public outreach in any of this, and we continue, at least our office continues to receive numerous concern from both sides of the aisle, I mean, whether it's Democrat, Republican, Independent, regarding our, regarding this item and voting centers. So it didn't bode well for Maricopa County 2016, and we'll see what happens in 2022.
Chair Bronson?
Supervisor.
We weren't, we weren't given the, the opportunity to have a discussion, and so I do think that the added comments at the end are out of order.
Thank you for those comments. Let's move on to item five, scope and cost of services. Supervisor Christie, you put this item on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think we covered pretty much what I was looking for on the previous agenda items, two, three, four, and five, I believe they were. I think the direction that I'm asking the county adminis, Acting County Administrator was made pretty clear, and I think that that kind of takes care of what I'm looking for. And consequently, if it would be in order to withdraw number five, I would so move, or else we could just say, let's move on to the next item.
Well, it was for discussion, so your, your motion is to just remove this item from discussion. Okay.
Yes.
I'll second that, and if there's no further discussion of the discussion, we will then move on to item six. Supervisor Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've, I think, touched on this issue in a certain manner earlier regarding in-person Board of Supervisors meeting. To give a little bit of history that we're all aware of, as of today, the countywide face mask requirements expired, and it is time that that same expiration be applied to face masks within county-owned buildings. It's been pointed out that this is an extraordinarily divisive issue, and that it need not be an issue that be placed before our community at this particular time with the numbers all falling in the right direction. The mitigation efforts have been highly successful. We're moving drastically in the right direction where face masks are not required. And out of all things that I have to deal with constantly is trying to define to my constituents the face mask requirements of when, where, and under what circumstances. Keeping this county building face mask requirement in effect creates nothing but confusion. It creates nothing but animosity. It creates nothing but divisiveness. We have seen that at this point, face masks do not have any effect, and that the numbers, again, back that up. We've heard from Dr. Garcia, his root, his feelings about face masks, and it's been effective in passing the Board of Supervisors in-person's meeting. It's been effective in expire, the expiration of the countywide mask, and it's time that all face mask requirements be removed so we have clarity and uniformity in our community, and we can move on with our lives, with our businesses, and with our enterprises. So I am moving that effective immediately, the Board of Supervisors rescind the face mask mandate in Pima County buildings, facilities, entertainment venues, and anything else covering Pima County properties, buildings, and facilities.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I will second it for discussion purposes because I know that the item in question was put in place by administrative procedure, and I would like to hear Ms. Lesher and Dr. Garcia's response.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. Ms. Lesher, Dr. Garcia, would you like to?
Thank you. Chair Bronson, and Supervisor Scott, and other members. What I would ask is a little bit of patience. The administrative procedure, 335, does provide for a mask mandate in county buildings. What we have been talking about internally is a movement towards really having the elimination of that mask mandate as a mandate and moving into potentially require recommendations and things, be part of an overall communication strategy that talks about a new world of COVID, which is something we're going to just be with a while and not with all of the specific emergency requirements. My goal is to have a new administrative procedure in place that lifts those specific requirements on Friday, March 11th, so that we can begin new sign, that gives us another week to understand what the CDC numbers are for our county. It gives us the weekend to get all of the new, excuse me, signage up and in place, and to start the Monday before your meeting on the 15th with all of the, again, the signage and the recommendations. We will continue to recommend that people wear masks in certain locations and in certain environments, if that is what they so choose, but that the overall requirement for the masks in the buildings, much like with county buildings, would, we would go, would be eliminated on that, at the end of the week, of the, Friday, the 11th of March. So we're asking you for permission to look through, looking through that, making those amendments to the Administrative Directive, and being able to have an opportunity to share it with staff and the community as part of an overall communication strategy.
Chair Bronson?
Well, Supervisor Scott was going to comment, and then I'll go to Supervisor Gruhalba.
I, I didn't have a comment, Madam Chair, but thank you. I just wanted to hear what Ms. Lesher had to say, and, and that was why I seconded the motion, because it sounded like they were moving in that direction when we talked about going back into in-person board meetings on the 15th. So that's why I wanted to hear what she had to say. And Ms. Lesher, I appreciate your comments.
All right, Supervisor Gruhalba?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Lesher, and so that's assuming that all of our numbers continue to trend in this direction. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Gruhalba, yes. Okay. And if I may, that's why the concern, we thought initially of simply rescinding the administrative procedure and lifting it completely. We would like to be able to provide some language. As we have seen in the past, we have, we have eliminated requirements. We have pretty much called the pandemic over on more than one occasion over the last couple of years, and we want to make sure that we have some safety valve language in place when we can come back to the board, should we for any reason see another variant or another spike at some point in the future. But our goal is to get past what I think we've all recognized as a very contentious point of discussion, and allow us to focus simply on continuing to talk about the various health requirements related to the pandemic. Yeah, and one of the other issues that I have some concern about is the boosters. Now, we're, our employees in general are vaccinated, but not necessarily boosted, and we don't have the information about that anyway. And so I do think that that's something we should look at in the future for. And Chair Bronson, Supervisor Gruhalba, as we've talked about that, we tend to line up with the CDC in terms of our requirements year to four, and to this point in time, the CDC considers individuals fully vaccinated when they've had their first allocation, and it does not include booster. We have been working with the CDC as well as Dr. Garcia and Cohen to see if at any point we need to modify our requirements for what is fully vaccinated. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
It appears that the direction that the county administration and the Health Department are moving towards is a mandate relaxing of face masks by March 11th. I will modify my amendment, or excuse me, my motion, my motion. Instead of immediately, I would move it towards, to March 11th to accommodate what Ms. Lesher was proposing. So if the understanding is that we're moving to get rid of face masks, maybe with some, some exceptions of other health protocols, but that the overall face mask requirement will be rescinded by March 11th, if the numbers still coincide, I would be willing to amend my, my item on there.
Supervisor Scott, are you willing to accept that amendment?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Supervisor Christie.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. With the motion being amended, any further discussion?
Chair Bronson, I just want to make sure that, that March 11th date is not a stone if the numbers don't align with us, with our county not being in high transmission.
I think that was, that was the maker of the motion, I think.
I just want to clarify, because I heard the date of March 11th, so I want to make sure that that is inherent in the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Want to just restate the motion because all this, it gets-
Good point, Supervisor Hines. Supervisor Christie, you want to restate your motion?
My restated motion is that the Board of Supervisors, under the direction of the county administration and the Pima County Health Department, will move towards a countywide mask rescission, including Pima County-owned buildings, based on justifiable numbers and information by March 11th.
All right. That's the motion. Let's do a roll call vote.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Gruhalba?
No.
Supervisor Hines?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Chair Bronson?
Yes, by your vote of three, two, motion carries. Moving on to item seven. Supervisor Christie, you place this item on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking for some clarification, and I think perhaps the county attorney's office can lend some light on, on some issues regarding the protocols and the appropriateness and the, the abilities of supervisor staff to be participants versus observers in various entities in the county that deal with committees, commissions, and task force, and the meeting participation. Also, I'd like to have a clarification or a confirmation, I guess, would be more appropriate. If three or more offices are participating in any of those functions, committees, boards, or commissions, task force, would that be a violation of the open meeting laws? And I think there's some gray areas that those areas, those committees, commissions, and task force kind of blend over each other, and I think there needs to be clarification about who can attend what, and in what manner of participation can they attend. So if I could get the county attorney to render some sort of a, an opinion or direction as to how supervisory staff can participate in these areas, and to make sure that open meeting laws are not being violated, and that we define the proper roles for either the participants or the observers of supervisory staff.
Mr. Brown, did you want to weigh in now, or you want to put something in writing?
Yeah, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, we will put something in writing to those points in the next few weeks.
And-
All right. And then I would add to that, and I don't think Supervisor Christie mentioned it, but, and you may or may not be aware of it, but we have a non-interference policy, a board policy that may influence your, your memo. And so if you could look at that and then put it in context of the questions that Supervisor Christie just raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, somebody is weighing in. I don't know who.
No, I just wanted to thank you for adding that, and I just wanted to make sure Mr. Brown understood. I kind of rambled on over a whole bunch of areas there, and I'm hoping that I didn't muddle up the intent of what I was trying to portray.
Chair, Chair Bronson, Supervisor Christie, I took detailed notes while you were speaking, and we'll reach out to your office if we have some confusion.
Obvious notes.
Obvious.
Obvious notes. I think that's Supervisor Hines.
Yeah, and, and also Supervisor Christie, I don't completely understand the specific concern or what prompted this item. Could you perhaps delineate it for us?
No.
You have your answer, Supervisor Hines. All right. That was by way of direction.
I mean, Supervisor Christie has a member of his staff actually on a county board, so I don't know what this issue is.
Thank you. I think you had your response from Supervisor Christie. So, or, so let's, I think that was by way of direction. It doesn't require a vote. We are on item eight now, which is classification compensation, human resources, regarding facilities management department. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. I think Supervisor Christie was the first to second it. If there are no discussions, are there any objections? Hearing on motion carries. And that brings us to the end of the addendum agenda. There are no objections. This meeting stands adjourned. And as I said, this is that Tuesday, so make sure you enjoy it before lunch begins tomorrow. And we will see you on March 15th.
Chair Bronson, you can weigh in. I'm sorry, I had a point of personal privilege I meant to bring up.
I'm sorry, I had a point of personal privilege I meant to bring up at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of John Miles, like a giant in our community, and his celebration of his life is going to be on March 12th. He dedicated his life to service in Pima County and served on a board here, that he was appointed by my dad, reappointed by Supervisor Elias, and he's just been such a figure in our community that we're all going to miss him.
Agreed. And I didn't realize he was first appointed by your dad. Very good. All right, if there are no objections to the adjournment, this meeting stands adjourned. We will see you March 15th, in person.